And Ms. Wendy Hardy Fletcher will say, uh, pledge of allegiance.
Oh, saying.
Lord God, thank you for this day and thank you for the blessings that you bestowed on this county, Lord. God help us tonight to do your will and to make this county go forward in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you have a hat on, would you remove it, please? I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any veterans in the house today? Please stand and be recognized. All right. Adoption of agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion? All in favor? Houses. Public information. Do we have any public signups, Mr. Attorney?
Anne Scott.
Good afternoon, Ms. Scott.
My greetings to all of you. Looks like we've all survived the storm 2022. And most recently, what else has happened in Pender County? Well, you're undergoing a revolution in your healthcare system with the agreement to go with a consulting firm to help you make that decision for this year, if I'm correct. Is that correct? You've made the decision to go with a consulting firm to help you make the decision that needs to be made before, is it July, June 30th? Is that correct?
Just make your comments, ma'am.
My name is Anne Scott and I come to you in reference to your health facility selection that you are undergoing that process.
Yes, ma'am.
That's why I wanted to make sure that in my reading of the news had not missed something.
Yes, ma'am.
I come as a first-person account of my life as a Duke Medical System patient. Four back surgeries at Duke Raleigh, two shoulder surgeries at Duke Raleigh, numerous other procedures. I care with a glaucoma research physician at Duke. Over thirty-five years of primary care in Meban Hillsborough clinics. I come also as a former health director at Caswell County for almost ten years at a time when Medicaid was a major source of our income. We worked to not make mistakes on billing. We worked to rebill if we did make a mistake. That funding allowed us to do in Caswell County, which was and probably continues to be considered a poor county, things for the healthcare of the county residents that they could not pay for themselves. Healthier babies, healthier pregnancies, primary care with a nurse practitioner where they could not access primary care on their own. Given that background, I want to just simply share some thoughts with you as you make this decision. I was stunned after my moving to Wilmington to read of the arrival of Medicare and Medicaid personnel to investigate the health system of the hospital to the city that I had just moved to. I yearned for Duke Primary Care, which stops at the little town of Clayton. I would hope that the administrators who approved the massive elimination of nursing positions are no longer able to make that decision again. I understand that the words come out of their mouths are not what I would call reliable. So I'm asking only a rhetorical question of why you would continue or have met with them. I would like to suggest that you Google to read of what their global reach is to give you an idea of what they could provide for a county that's an hour and a half away from their current southern limits. I hope that somehow Duke's interest in this part of the state is listened to a little bit more carefully. Because in this corner of the state, I would like to see Duke, but I think that we all deserve better healthcare. And I think that you have the opportunity to do that. I thank you for the opportunity to give you a first-person account. I hope you take the opportunity to look at Duke and their global and their statewide. They have not paid me to come here. They have not asked me to come here. I come here simply to hope that you can make a decision that will benefit your county better than what you've had in the past.
Thank you. We appreciate your input.
All right. So, that's public comment. Moving right along to the consent agenda. I understand, Mr. McCoy, you had a issue with item?
Seven point three.
Seven point three and would like to make a comment. Does that require removal of this item? Or if that aspect of your concern is corrected?
The main thing to be corrected, the record to be corrected. On the vote for the chairman, for duty for chairman, they had, it'd be down to Epstein. Actually, I voted for her. And also for vice chairman, for Wendy Hardy, I voted for her too. They had it down as Epstein, so I don't know why that was put that way. Actually, I'd get it corrected, the record.
Other than that, Mr. McCoy, have you satisfied with the consent agenda? Do we have any other items that need to be pulled? Okay. Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do I have a second? All in favor? All right. Consent agenda is approved. Moving right along to approvals and resolutions. Sheriff Cutler, item eight point one, resolution to declare a Glock twenty-two forty caliber handgun surplus award to Deputy Allen Deese.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yes. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today and this is just what you said. Madam Chair, we'd just like to award this, uh, this sidearm that Mr. Deese will carry and, uh, award that to him as we've done in the past.
So, um, do I hear any comments, questions? Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? There you go.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Our regards to Deputy Deese.
And I may, uh, if it pleases you, I'll bring him in here to a meeting and present it to him.
That would be very nice.
Let y'all do that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. So, eight point two, Ms. Blue, approval and offer and authorized closing process for sale of surplus property on U.S. Highway four twenty-one in the Charlotte community.
Sorry, I have a few things with me. All right. This item is approval of an offer for, all, all of these items were already authorized for surplus. They've gone to gov deals and these are results of the auction. This one is a bid for ten thousand two hundred dollars. The tax value is eight thousand forty-three dollars. It was acquired through tax foreclosure in two thousand and one. And it's a one point five acre wooded residential lot with road access.
And how many acres did you say that was?
One point five.
Okay. Any questions?
I'm glad to see that your bid is above tax value. It gives me heartburn when you sell property under tax value. I think we have a citizen dependent county. The taxpayers, because not still property way up now, maybe close to the tax value, but not way under the tax value. But this one, I really appreciate this one.
And I think in part with your heartburn in mind, that we have, have all agreed to put a threshold on these dot gov sales of, of real property for no lower than tax value. Am I correct in saying that?
That's up to you all, so yes.
I thought we had already discussed it and made that request that that happen in the future.
We can certainly do that.
Okay. Mr. Manager? Was I incorrect in saying that? Did we not have a conversation about wanting to have a tax value threshold as a minimum on all properties that are sold on the dot gov site?
Madam Chair, yeah, we, we, you and I did have a, a verbal conversation about it. What, if, if you don't mind, if you could make a formal motion and vote on it. That way we could, I think going forward, I think in this case.
I can, I can bring something for you all to.
No problem.
Okay. Next, next meeting, please, formalize that.
We spoke about subsequent to these, uh, going forward.
Yeah, these were done several weeks ago.
Okay. All right. All right. Any further conversation? Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval, eight point one.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Eight point two.
Yeah, I mean eight point two, yeah.
Okay. All in favor? Houses. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Blue. Uh, eight point three. Uh, surplus property off Little Egypt Road in Columbia.
Yes. So, from this point forward, they are, are not quite tax value. They're as close as we could get them with the, the gov deals auctions. Um, and so I just want to be clear about that. But this is a bid for a hundred and four thousand tax value, um, at one thirty-one, two fifty. It's, we, it was a tax foreclosure from nineteen seventy. Um, and it's a hundred acre wooded lot with no legal easement.
Well, obviously, this is one I have a problem with. Rest of my new, but definitely this is, could be under tax value. I think twenty-seven thousand dollars under tax value, but I figured.
But you have no way to access it. Is that what you just said?
It's land law.
There's no legal easement currently. Uh, the other options are to reject all bids and maintain possession or reject all bids and re-auction.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The other options are to reject all bids and just maintain possession of it and nothing happens with it or reject all bids and re-auction.
Can we do them all at one time? I mean.
Do what? I mean, you can do all the rest of the items at once if you'd like.
Are the other items significantly undervalued?
Oh, yeah, they are.
No, the, this, the, well, I guess it depends on what you buy significantly.
This is the biggest one and I also have a problem with this one.
This is definitely the biggest one.
So.
We've had it since nineteen seventy.
Yes. We did a little bit of math. Um, and since nineteen seventy, we've lost about eighty-seven thousand dollars in tax revenue on this property alone. So we were trying to get it back out there to, because we don't have any need for it. Um, we can't access it anyways.
And, and we could use the tax money.
Right.
So, do I hear a motion? Any other comments, questions?
Are we gonna vote on all of these at one time?
No, we're gonna go one by one.
Make a motion for it now.
Just this one. Gotta do something. Somebody make a motion.
Motion not to approve.
A second.
All in favor? So that one has to be resubmitted, I guess, for sale. With the, with the threshold being the tax value.
Okay.
Well, to save us some time in light of our prior comments, is that possible for the rest of them as well?
It, it's, it's possible for all of them, yes.
Yeah, all of what it does.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, if you don't mind, Trey, would you wait? Can, can you just, they've already accepted bids. Can you, I would think you'd have to go out and just re-bid it again rather than?
That was my question.
Then get somebody to change their bid.
I mean, if we're.
Well, we would have to reach out to these folks and, and inform them that their bids were not accepted anyways.
Right. But I mean, our bid notice says that all bids are subject to approval. So I mean, we're not bound to the bid. But we can, but yes, for it to be a bid process, we have to go back out to re-bid. We can't just say, go raise your bid.
Correct. We, we could accept their offer and do a ten-day bid, upset bid process if we really need it.
Right. But yes.
One way or the other, it will happen.
If we're not accepting, we've gotta start the process over.
Correct.
And I think they didn't accept it. I think that was the vote.
Sure. That's right.
We did not accept.
Right. So then we need to.
So we'd have to resubmit it through.
Okay. Um, eight point four is a bid of two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars on a parcel for tax value of six thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. We acquired it for tax foreclosure in nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, this is a point five five acre wooded residential lot with no legal easement. Uh, we calculated the lost tax revenue on this one at nine thousand two hundred and sixty dollars, which is more than the tax value.
Thank you for bringing to our attention the loss of tax value. That makes it a little bit more significant, doesn't it?
It does. It does. It makes a difference. Um, some of the other ones aren't that old, but these first two were, were from a long time ago. Um, and so it really does make a difference.
Any comments? Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Wait, we're talking about eight point four?
We are talking about eight point.
Eight point four four.
I make a motion to reject it.
I just like my comic room coming in there. That's four thousand dollars for what? The tax value.
They're all under just a little bit. If you're gonna, um, make a motion to reject all of them that are under you, you'll be doing all of them. I just had a problem with the Little Egypt because it was so broad.
Yeah, it was such a large parcel.
They're all under, if I'm not mistaken.
The rest of them.
I read the book three times.
Yeah. I put them in order on purpose. So that we could do the one that was over first.
So you knew the drill, right?
I do. We're just bringing you the results of the auction and.
So we've, we've got a motion to approve and we've got a motion to disapprove. So let's hear the motion to approve. Do I have a second on the motion to approve? Having none, that motion fails. Okay. So moving on to eight point five. Approval and offer, uh, of offer and authorized closing process on the property on Old River Road.
Yes, this is a ten thousand eight hundred and one dollar bid. Um, tax value is twelve thousand one hundred dollars. The county acquired this through tax foreclosure in two thousand and eighteen. So one point four two acre wooded residential lot with road access. And the lost tax revenue is one point, or, um, one thousand six hundred and six dollars.
Any comments? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to. Motion to sell.
Okay.
All in favor? All right. Houses. Eight point six, parcel on King's Estates in Virgaw.
Yes. So this, the next, I believe, six are all on this same street. Um, it's King's Estates. It's been parceled out into like half acre wooded lots. Um, it's all wetlands with road access. This one is a three thousand five hundred and fifty dollar bid for a tax value of one thousand, or six thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Required this through tax foreclosure in twenty nineteen and lost tax revenue is eleven hundred dollars. This is, this street is near Malca's Corner off of Union Chapel Road.
Do I hear any comments, questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion not for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor not to approve sale of the King's Estate parcel? Raise your hand. That one, that sale fails. Eight point seven parcel, another parcel on King's Estate.
Yes, this is on the same street. It is a bid for three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, tax value of one hundred, or six thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Tax foreclosure twenty nineteen, point four nine acre wooded lot, wetlands with road access, l- lost tax revenue of eleven hundred dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to sell.
Second.
All in favor to sell the property referenced in eight point seven? That passes. Okay, now we're on eight point eight. Um, the parcel, again, another, uh, as King's Estate parcel.
Yes. This is a bid of four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, tax value of six thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars. Acquired through tax foreclosure in twenty nineteen, point four nine acre wooded lot, wetlands with road access, lost tax revenue of eleven hundred dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to sell.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Eight point nine, uh, King's Estates parcel.
Yes, this is a bid of three thousand one hundred dollars, tax value of six thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, tax foreclosure in twenty twenty-one. This is a point four nine acre wooded lot, wetlands with road access, lost tax revenue of two hu- two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
Not to approve, eight point nine.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor not to approve the sale of eight point nine? We will not be selling that parcel. Eight point ten, another King's Estate parcel.
Yes, this is a bid of four thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars, tax value of six thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, tax foreclosure in two thousand twenty-one. Point four nine acre wooded lot, wetlands with road access, lost tax revenue of two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to sell.
Do I hear a second? Second on the motion to sell to accept the offer and authorize closing on this property in eight point ten. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor of selling the parcel listed, uh, in eight point ten, accepting the offer as bid? That motion fails.
Take away that hand, isn't it?
So we will not be selling.
Madam Chair, can we revoke that? I think Mr. Takeaway is hanging up.
You did, I didn't see you. I'm so sorry. Okay. Well, then we will be selling eight point two. Yes. That motion to sell or accept the bid passed. Eight point eleven, approval of, of offer and to authorize closing process for another parcel in King's Estate. Ms. Blue?
Yes. Excuse me. This is a bid for five thousand and fifty dollars, tax value of six thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars, tax foreclosure in twenty twenty-one. Point four nine acre wooded lot, wetlands with road access, lost tax revenue of two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion for approval on that one.
That's it.
All in favor? Approved. Eight point twelve, approval of off, offer and authorized closing in another King's Estate parcel.
This is the last King's Estate parcel. It is a bid for three thousand and fifty dollars, tax revenue, or tax value of six thousand one hundred and seventy-five. Tax foreclosure in twenty nineteen, point four nine acre wooded lot, wetlands with road access and lost tax revenue of eleven hundred dollars.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion not to sell.
Second. Do I hear a motion not to sell this property that's, the bid is half the amount of the tax value? That motion fails. Do I hear any other motions?
Make a motion to sell.
Do I hear a second?
Which one come out now?
Eight point twelve.
Okay.
The motion not to sell failed, so we've got a motion on the table to set.
Okay.
Do I have a second? And that motion se- uh, fails as well, so we will not be selling eight point twelve.
Uh, the last one I have is eight point thirteen. Uh, this is approval of sale of surplus property. It, this is off of McDuffie Road in the Grady District. Um, the bid is two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, the revised property tax value is four thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, and the county acquired this through tax foreclosure in twenty nineteen. Uh, this is a one point four three acre wooded residential lot with no legal easement. And lost tax revenue of twenty-four hundred dollars.
Do I hear a motion on the parcel of McDuffie Road, eight point thirteen?
Not to approve.
Do I have a second? That motion fails. Any other motions?
Make a motion to sell this property.
Do I have a second? That motion fails as well, so we will not be selling that. Thank you, Ms. Blue. If we could get a write-up of that resolution so we won't have to deal with this in the future.
It's a record number at one time, I think.
Yeah.
Now we have one or two.
Mr. Du- Mr. Devon, is this your work? Good job. So sorry, it doesn't seem like it is appreciated, but it is.
Yes, Andy's worked very hard. Thank you very much.
Yes, Andy does work very hard. All right. Eight point fourteen, Ms. Moser.
Madam Chair, Ms. Moser is out there today and so I will cover this item for her. I think, uh, Mr. Stewart also has COVID, so.
Thank you.
The purpose of this item, Commissioner, is, is to, uh, approve a, a contract with Cape Fear Engineering to conduct, uh, an environmental assessment and geotechnical engineering services for the proposed Health and Human Services building. This, uh, particular study is a requirement for our USDA loan application, so we hope to get this study done and get our application into USDA in, in March or so, but we need to, this is a critical step in that process. We did go out for a competitive request for qualifications process. We received four responses and, uh, the staff determined that Cape Fear Engineering was the most responsible qualified bidder.
What was the range of the bids to perform this assessment?
The, uh, let's see, range of bids was, I'll just call them off, the, uh, and Caitlin was fifty-six thousand, Cape Fear fifty-one. Cape Fear fifty-one, uh, S and M E was seventy thousand, and then ECS was, uh, twenty-four thousand two oh one. But the way they quoted it is that they had individual services that were add-ons, and so it was, uh, difficult to make it, uh, an apples to apples. And, uh, staff recommended, uh, Cape Fear because of their familiarity with, uh, the USDA loan application process, whereas the others was.
Did I understand you to say Cape Fear's bid was fifty-one thousand?
Fifty-one.
Okay, so why is this item fifty-five thousand?
Right, that's correct. Uh, I remember Carolyn did mention to me this morning that she had added in a, a, a four thousand dollar, in case there was any contingencies. But the actual bid itself was fifty-one. I could give you the exact number, fifty-one oh one oh.
Well, is it the contract? Wasn't the bid itself, didn't it include some latitude for contingencies? So why are we adding on at the back end for approval?
I, I think we don't need to, if you want to go with the fifty-one, I, that's just something.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but typically they will add, um, when they, uh, quote.
Yeah.
Some wiggle room. And we don't have a copy of it.
Yeah. Well, we'd be comfortable, if you want to, fifty-one oh one oh, because that is the con- the bit, the bid amount.
Um, at my fellow board members' pleasure, but those would be my comments. Any questions?
I know Cape Fear Engineering has a good track record, I'm real familiar with them, and, uh, they really do a good work for me. And so, let me get a comment.
So, um, I'm if I were in a position to make a motion, I would, I would not be amenable to padding in a bid amount. Um, but that's me. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I'm making a motion for, a motion for approval, eight point fourteen.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Hearing the second, that, uh, fails, and perhaps Ms. Moser can bring it back at our next meeting and clear up some of these questions.
Okay, thank you.
Eight point fifteen, approval of results of school bond referendum and certifying resolution. Mister Andrews.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Uh, what we're asking you to do here is to, uh, certify, uh, and approve the election results, and it also authorized the issuance of bonds according to the wording of the resolution. But I wanted to make it clear that, uh, that you, this authorizes the issuance, but any sale would need to still come back to the, uh, Board for approval. So you're not authorizing us to sell bonds, really you're approving the, the election results, certifying the election results.
And, and getting the paperwork to the LGC and that, and reporting in on those kinds of things. But the manager's absolutely correct, there will not be a sale and the amount and the timing of the sale will be approved by the Board each step of the way.
Right. So we recognize that the election result.
Yes, sir, that's basically it, and, and moving ahead, so that we've got all that already in place for when you do move ahead to actually sell the bond.
Do I hear a second?
Second. I just want to make it clear to the public that all this happened before my time, and I do certify the vote, but I do not certify the amount of the bonds, um, because I've been upset about it and unsure about it the whole time, and I have not had one school official come to me and try to explain this money as of today. So I just want to make it clear to the public. I heard your voices when I was running, and I do certify the vote, but I do not agree with a tax increase. That's all I have.
Alright, do I hear a motion? Ha- having heard a motion and a second from Mister McCoy, um, all in favor? Alright, motion passes. Alright. Um, eight point sixteen, Mister Andrews, appointment to, uh, interim clerk to the Board.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Trey, you want to?
Well, and, um, the, it would be my suggestion to the Board that, um, you proceed with having the manager serve as the clerk as well. And then he has, uh, Ms. Avery or whoever subsequently provide support, and they can be an assistant clerk. And just as, uh, when I spoke about with Madam Chair, the clerk of court, you know, she doesn't sign every document. She has assistants and deputies that sign a lot of the paperwork that goes through. No human being could sign, I mean, you know, that, I mean, you'd have carpel tunnel if you tried to sign it all yourself. So you've got to have assistants in this case. The, uh, the, the manager would select how much administrative support he needed. They would be the assistant and the deputy, and that would, that, again, it's entirely appropriate to do it that way. So that would be my suggestion on how the Board proceed for a, a, a moving ahead. Um, and if you wanted to approve him just as interim, in case there was something that needed to be certified, then you could certainly do that, and then have a, a permanent appointment, um, at the next meeting.
So is this in any way an indictment or a statement that we had been, uh, historically doing this?
No, ma'am.
And allocating responsibility in an inappropriate manner?
No, ma'am. And I, to be clear, going to statute, if you wanted to designate, let's see, who's sitting out there? Mister Batson as the clerk to the Board, you could. You, it is, either has to be the registrar of deeds or a county employee to serve as clerk to the Board. So you could designate anybody, but if they stop being an employee of the county, they're no longer the clerk because they're not eligible consistent with that.
So, um, any questions? And the suggestion is to?
Well, it, it, do we anticipate needing anything certified by a clerk between now and our next meeting, Mister Manager?
No. Resolutions.
Is that what I'm understanding? The manager was not the clerk?
Yes, that could be, um, I, I, I guess that would be the question, i- i- if the Board would authorize the manager to, to certify resolutions. That would be the only thing that we would need.
So although the county is in this area, do it that way?
It varies, Commissioner McCoy, um, for instance, uh, New Hanover, I think, has three or four people in that department, and the clerk is effectively a department head. Uh, well, Melissa went there, she was an assistant clerk, and there is a, a clerk who serves as a department head, but they have a very different structure. You know, that, they have, the, the clerks provide support just to the Board members, who all have offices in the county complex. So, it, and it varies across the state on how, um, the school government notes that in many, especially what have been more rural counties, it's, uh, there's not enough for just providing clerk type support to Board members is enough for the position, and so there's administrative, or again, a- another employee provides those duties, uh, under the supervision of the manager. So that, that would be the way, uh, a, a lot of places do it, but it can, it, it, it varies. Counties can structure as, as, you know, how they wa- want, and some places have, again, the clerk is a department head, effectively.
But not in Pender County?
But that has never been done in Pender County.
Okay. So.
Clarify, so if the manager has to sign a document, who signs it for?
Um, well, that would be, uh, a- again, once, uh, if he's born or, and you want to go into the interim, but i- is there something that needs to be certified? That's why I asked the question.
Well, a lot of your documents do have the chairman, the manager signing the clerk's test. But I don't, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just clarifying for myself.
Um, well, I need to see, uh, again, I need to see the documents, uh, to know what it is, but, uh, I mean, again, the manager could sign because he's, again, that would be the proposal moving forward, and the way it was done, I know Rick Benton did both, uh, I mean, going by things with manager, most of, back to the first John Ballard. He was both manager and clerk to the Board, so.
And that provides continuity.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, do we have to vote or make a resolution that the manager signs, um, and certifies documents in the interim?
That would be a- appropriate, and it would address Ms. Avery's concern, I think.
Do I hear a motion of resolution that, state your motion.
The motion would be authorizing the manager to certify any documents as needed until, uh, the permanent appointment as clerk is made.
Do I hear a, um, motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Passes. So, um, and with regards our practice of designating the manager as clerk to the Board and his administrative assistant as deputy clerk, will that require a resolution, or is that a practice?
Um, well, it has been a practice, but it can be certainly be done by resolution just, and the reason I would say that now is we've got, we do have these bonds coming up, and sometimes they want to see every I dotted and every T crossed, uh, you know, and as Madam Chair will understand, for instance, I've been presented with a hundred and eighty page documents, and they say, oh, it's alright, just sign it, and of course, my response is absolutely not. Everything's right, I, well, then you sign it. Uh, but I, if I, if I'm signing and it's right, I'm reading it. So, uh, that, that, and that's the type of thing that it could absolutely come up of, you know, well, where's the appointment, just like where's the appointment of the manager? I, we have had that request before, um, and the vote for the chair is signed. I mean, that, you know, the, 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 the election of the chair, I mean, sometimes those bond companies get very picky.
And I like that because we'll have a deputy, uh, clerk, uh, in the event that the manager's on vacation, and then if the staff is on vacation, then the manager can handle it, and I think that will, that will provide more continuity. Alright, um, so we'll anticipate that resolution coming before us?
Uh, I believe the next.
Seventeen.
The next.
Seventeen.
Wonderful, alright. Anything further on that item?
No, ma'am.
Next, we have Mister Tommy Batson himself for eight point seventeen. And let me just say to the public and my fellow board members, I had a call on Christmas Eve about three o'clock from Tommy Batson. He was saying we've got about two thousand of our citizens who have no, uh, electricity and have had no electricity, and they need a warm place to stay, and we have opened up the admin building, uh, to make available to our citizens. And I want to tell you, whomever was involved in that decision, kudos to you and thank you. Uh, as a citizen, uh, it, it's nice to know you guys are on the ball, but as a chair, I'm very proud to serve with you.
So a little bit on that, Ms. Ms. Chairman, Chair, Chairwoman, um, the evening of Christmas Eve, we watched a little power outage across the county, and there's a small portion of Hampstead that had roughly two thousand people without power. Our office, the entire staff continued to monitor it, and we made preparations. We reached out to the manager's office and spoke with both county managers, as well as Ms. Moser, as well as Ms. Tammy with the PIO side, and, um, around three o'clock, we made the call. The power didn't come on at four per Duke Progress's, um, advisory that we would mobilize and move. And at four o'clock, wheels on the ground, Mark, Sarah, myself, and Amy were all moving to Hampstead, got everything set up, made our phone calls, and Miss Tammy got a press release out, social media post went out, Code Red was getting ready to go out, and we looked at the map and the power's back on, but we mobilized Christmas Eve.
Did anybody have to use the warming room?
Within a few minutes of us mobilizing, opening up, Duke Energy turned the light switch back on, so we're blessed.
You were ready then.
But we mobilized, we moved, and everybody weren't Christmas Eve, which was not a big deal to us. We were there to help the citizens, and the power came back on, and we hoped to never see that again. But we're ready, and we activated the plans we had in the office and used our partner agencies to support it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And limited as much staff as we could to keep from having to pull other departments and other personnel away from their family on Christmas Eve. All of us had made arrangements, and we were good to go to work.
That's great.
No problem.
So you have something else to brag about, don't you?
I'll bring that up then, so I don't know how many of you got to see the Wilmington Star News on Friday. So Sarah, helping the community, was on the front page of the Wilmington Star.
It was a good article, you know?
A very good article, um, had some help from our county PIO, and one of the things then, when disaster strikes, Conder County's keystone is ready to serve. So when Hurricane Ian was approaching us the week of Ian, two of the four staff members in our office were out on medical. Myself was hung up in trial for the week, and Sarah with the wheel in the office, eight to five Monday through Wednesday, getting everything going, and we worked on it after hours and throughout the week, and we activated for Ian, and we had a good, good event, had a good exercise, and didn't have any damage, didn't have a large loss. But Sarah's a key person in our office, a lot of people don't see Sarah, Mark, nor Amy, but we're all part of the team, and there was a great article on the front page of Wilmington Star News. So it was nice to see Pender County take the front page on a holiday weekend.
For having done something right.
Correct. But I, if I should email the article out, but I'll try to get it back out so y'all can see it again.
Anything else?
I got two items on the agenda, I've got, I think, eight point fourteen or fifteen?
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Eight point seventeen.
So before you is a grant. Pender County Emergency Management, along with Pender EMS and Fire, received in the middle of December, prior to the meeting coming out. North Carolina Emergency Management has awarded Pender County and Pender EMS and Fire a grant to conduct a full-scale search and rescue exercise. This full-scale search and rescue exercise will be named January nineteenth to the twenty-third in the Holly Shelter game lands. This event will encompass search and rescue, fire, EMS, dispatch, and law enforcement agencies from out our, throughout our county, as well as from across the state. We will mobilize as a real life event, probably late Thursday, sometime Thursday afternoon, with a nine-one-one call to the nine-one-one center, and it will involve into a full, complex law enforcement and search and rescue event throughout the weekend, and we will wrap it all up on Sunday, and partners and people from across the state of North Carolina, roughly a hundred, a hundred and twenty, will deploy, respond, and we will conduct a full-scale, large-scale event in Holly Shelter game lands over three to four days. And this grant is to help cover the cost of food, food-related items, office supplies, printer ink, fuel for our generators, but we will mobilize and run off the grid, everything will be off the grid, as well as hand washing stations in Portage Johns. Our office, along with Pender EMS and Fire, the Sheriff's Office, have been working on this for a few months, and the state awards the grant the week before Christmas, and that is before you, and the grant will reimburse after the event up to eleven thousand five hundred and nine dollars and fifty six cents. And this will also check off one of the boxes on the Emergency Manager's Office Emergency Management Performance Grant that we have to do full-scale exercises, and this checks one of them boxes off for us, and it brings everybody together. This is an annual event we've done for over fifteen to, almost twenty years, and we had to back it down the last two years because of COVID and not have it, but we're enacting it, and the Commissioners are more than welcome to come out, we'll give you a tour and let you see everything from people with dog teams to ground pounders to people running the command post every, the whole weekend. And we're going to do it rain, sleet, or snow, and we've done it in rain, sleet, or snow over the past. So we just need approval of this, so we can accept the grant from the state and follow through with this.
Thank you, Mister Batson. Do we have any questions or comments?
Sounds good, this is really, I think, good exercise training, so I think it's worthwhile the money, yeah.
I just think they should have gone to Black River.
We have done it in the Black River the last couple of years, and we actually flipped from Black River this year over to the Holly Shelter game lands.
So what you'll do with snows?
We're going to continue to have a search, there'll be real people in the woods, real lost subjects, because people get lost, rain, sleet, snow, hot or cold, and we're going to roll and respond.
Yeah, okay, sounds good, hmm.
Any further comments? Do I hear a motion?
Motion for approval.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? And it passes this second item.
So I have a discussion item for the, um, Board. Pender County established their own local emergency planning committee in late of two thousand twenty-two. And part of that, approval of the LAPC, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, is to have elective officials serve on our committee. Our committee, our group meets every other month, and we sit down and talk about hazard material, the Tier Two stuff, the Right to Know Act, and this is an invitation for the county Commissioners at a later date to sit down, decide who you would like to serve as our elective official on our Board, and at that time, bring it back, and we will have an application process, and once y'all decide who you'd like to serve on this committee, we will entertain that and take that back, and have you a position on the. we will entertain that and take that back and have you a position on the L A P C and let you meet with us every other month as we do throughout the year. But I want to just bring that up as a public comment and y'all talk amongst yourselves and who you would and y'all decide who you would like to serve on the committee and then let us know at a later date.
Very well. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank y'all. Have a good day.
Thank you. All right. And we have uh apparently nothing in appointments. Um do we need to open as the Maple Hill Water and Sewer? Uh the Rocky Point Water and Sewer? Uh Scotts Hill Water and Sewer? Moore's Creek Water and Sewer? Central Pender Water and Sewer? All right, and our Ms. Moser is not here, so we can't open as Pender County Board of Health. Is there anybody here in her absence? Social Services Board, our leader is out with COVID. Um Mr. Manager, do you have any items to share with us?
Uh Madam Commissioner, members of the commission, just only to say that we've had uh we're interviewing for the project manager positions this Thursday and we think we've got some pretty good candidates and we are starting to see, I think, a few more applications in the pools getting stronger for job openings. I think the job market overall is tightening a little bit, just slightly. And we are starting to see a little bit more, a better pool, so we're excited about that.
Very good. Anything else?
No ma'am, thank you.
Um. Mr. Batson?
I don't have anything. Thank you though, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Um having uh some items for closed session and I'm gonna be broad because it might stray into some of them on this. Um item three, attorney-client privilege, in- including uh the case of Coastal Pine versus Pender County, twenty-two C V S, one zero two nine. Uh then in addition, item uh five, acquisition of real property and item uh six, personnel. Anything else, Mr. Manager, Chairwoman?
All right.
And that's? No ma'am.
All right. Commissioner Tate?
No, I think I read an email on Mr. Manager that said something to the effect that uh this board would be considering appointments at this meeting or something to that degree under closed session and I just had a question of clarity. Uh in my prior eight years, I didn't ever notice to discuss that in closed session, which is when we're while we're going to have a closed session this time. That's my question.
We we will have a discussion and then we'll come back in an open session and clarify.
Well, we need to, and I mean, it could be, certainly ask me questions about legalities of of appointments and the like, but I mean, it has to be that. Um and yes, any appointment, any appointments, and that's specified in our standard motion, we we get adopted and done as law that any appointments will be made in open session. But that that would be uh in terms of the the legalities of it or to the extent it might be personnel, which is why I said the broad of of those. Uh because some of the um appointments could be, some of them are just ex officio and some of them, i.e. you're serving as commissioner, some of them you could continue i- i- if you weren't a commissioner. Um so that would be the distinction there.
Anything else, Commissioner Tate?
No ma'am, thank you.
Mr. McCoy?
I'm good. Yeah, I don't have anything to share right now.
All right.
I have nothing.
Madam Coach here?
Yep, I do.
All right.
Um so we've got a lot uh to do this year and uh with the uh assistance of staff, we've made a good headway on several uh things and a number of things and um looking forward to getting some resolution before budget season starts on uh some big ticket items we're working on. So um I don't have anything other than that to round here, a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion.
Okay, we need to make a motion specifically.
Make a motion to go in a closed session.
On items, on what items?
Three.
Item number three, which is Coastal Pines, the twenty-two C V S, one zero two nine. Item number five, which is acquisition of real property, and item number six, which is personnel.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Oh.
Okay. We are back in open session. Um, so, um, having had discussions, do I have a motion with regards the, um, boards that will be, that our individual commissioners will be representing us on?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, was there one change that did you?
Yes, one change.
You got that child, I just want to be sure she was aware.
You go.
Thank you ma'am, you're ahead of me.
All right. Do we have a motion with regards the commissioners, boards, and committees?
I'd be glad to make that motion, Madam Chair.
Um, well, uh...
Oh, well, did, are you prepared to read those, Ms. Hardy?
Yes, I'm prepared to read them.
Okay, go ahead, go please.
Madam Chair, it might be appropriate to have Mr. Tate make the motion to add it to the agenda.
All right.
I think that may have been...
Good point.
Yes.
All right, let's add that to the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
All right, now, that will require unanimous vote. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor? All right, now, do I have a motion with regards the commissioners, committees, and boards?
Ms. Fletcher, if you have the list to read, I'll let you make the motion, I'll be glad to second it.
Okay.
Will you make the motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion that, um, the list of names be written as what, the read, as well as, um, each commissioner's name be, uh, given for the committees that they'll be serving on. The first one is for, um, Commissioner Fred McCoy, Animal Shelter, Workforce Development, Cape Fear River Program, the Cape Fear RPO, Fire Commission, and Juvenile Crime. Ms. Hardy, um, Pender Memorial Hospital, the Nursing and Adult Services, the Wilmington Area MPO, um, Tourism Development, and the Southeast Economic Development, as well as the Wilmington Business Development. Commissioner Jerry Groves, the Cape Fear RPO, Workforce Development, Smart Start of Pender, and elect, he's the first-elect Representative of the Emergency Planning Committee. Um, Chair Newton, the COG, Cape Fear, um, the Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer, Pender Housing Initiative, Advisory Board of Health, Planning Board, um, Ultimate. Commissioner Jimmy Tate, Pender EMS, the Hampstead Kiwanis, um, Priority One, the Topsail, Topsail Island Shoreline Protection, and the Wallace Airport.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right, there we go. We have our committees and our boards allocated. Mr. Manager, would you have proper notifications sent to the respective organizations with our addresses so they can contact us with their 2023 schedule?
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anything else before we have another motion? Do we have another motion? Y'all gotta give me a motion or we're gonna stand here all afternoon.
Oh, I have to give a motion.
No, second. We're adjourned. Okay, ma'am, turn us off.